Let's rise for the pledge.
Yes.
Over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our own. Fellow board members, good evening. Good evening, Heather. And all you folk in the stands, hello. We are glad to be out at Leonard. And gonna give just Heather a chance to breathe for a second, and we will do attendance.
I'm ready. I apologize.
Oh, you're good.
President Dowdley.
Here.
Vice President Alexandria.
Here.
Secretary Schaefer, here. Professor Bailey.
Here.
Percy Griffith.
Here.
Percy Foster.
Here.
Percy Campbell.
Excellent.
Very good, very good. Mr. Throne, are there any changes to the board agenda?
None.
No changes. Can we go on to item number three, consent agenda? Someone like to, yes, Chad.
Move to approve the consent agenda presented.
Is there support? Mary is supporting discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Prearranged request to address the board, Leonard Elementary School, Paul McNeddon.
Well. Welcome everybody up from out of elementary. You get a chance, we have side notes back there for everybody. I'm going to, you know, still early in the year, as you know, we had construction projects over the summer where she required us to pack up multiple school and we got in just when school got started and started being unpacked and we've been getting everything back to normal. So within the first few weeks, school feels like we're finally back to where we know where everything is again. So Tony and his guys have been doing a great job of being responsive, so anything we run We did take a chance to look at our survey data at SAP, and some of the things that stood out as we were looking at this was that our parents strongly agree that they would recommend an elementary to a family number, so that was encouraging for us. Overall, we had favorable ratings for the high standards and expectations for learning. 100% strongly agree or agree that family are encouraged to attend school activities. I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that a little bit later. We also got high marks for safety and security. One thing that didn't stand out was over 25% of our parents surveyed said that they didn't know that their students received support for academic and career plan. And we know that the state has developed a career planning model, and we are putting that into our school improvement plan and making it one of our point of emphasis this year. Our career development goal is added to our school improvement plan. Teachers will receive collaboration time, resources, and training to develop career readiness activities for students. And when I first heard this, I thought, wow, that's kind of strange to be doing career readiness with kindergartners. But the more I looked into it, and the more we kind of developed the ideas, it really came out that there's a lot of things that you can do, even starting in kindergarten, as small as, we received some costumes, because kids play dress up and stuff at playtime, and their career development costumes. So instead of, you know, fairies and dragons, it's police officers, doctors, and things like that. We've already started planning field trips, changing some of the vocabulary that we use in class. Many teachers have classroom jobs that they assign students over the year, their job for the week to do this or that. We've now changed the vocabulary that we use with those jobs, made them more career-oriented. And instead of like the paper collector, it would be like the librarian, and they would have a variety of activities that relate to a career at the library. We've had books purchased for our media center to support career development, and we are working on a lot of it. We created a Google Doc. We've gone through our program of inquiry with our ID coordinator, and found all the different areas that we were already doing, and we really didn't even realize, and just kind of now made it more of a focus. Within our school improvement plan, we obviously, in the elementary literacy is a huge thing of what we do, so a very important strategy is our professional development for our teachers, making sure that all of our staff have all the tools that they need and the knowledge that they need to be the best they can be for our students. That was one of our focuses for this year, is the adult learning that's gonna take place. And when we wrote our school improvement plan, that was our strategy, so it's looking more at ourselves and what are we doing to make ourselves better. So up there you can see, we have several different things throughout the year. Plan dates for literacy coach, scheduled PD days, monthly collaboration with our ID coordinator, mentor days with colleagues in the literacy coach, and a new thing that we are excited to try to implement this year is the use of the Swivel device to share instructional strategies. And the Swivel device, if you're not aware, is a, like a recording system that can be done in a classroom, like a video recording, where you don't have to have somebody operating. So if a teacher wants to record themselves teaching a lesson, but it's maybe a little apprehensive of having a colleague come in and actually record them, they can do it themselves. It follows where they go, there's a microphone that goes with it, and they can record themselves. And they can look back and watch it and see if it's something that they can notice, just self-reflecting on their own teaching, or if they feel confident in what they're doing, sharing it with colleagues, and posting it in a gallery where other people can see some of those teaching strategies. This year, we also started K2 programs, so we're, and that is just being on pad, and it's gonna be a professional development focus for this year, to learn for those K2 teachers how to teach that better in program. Points of pride. One of our strongest points of pride, as you saw from the very first slide where it said 100% of our parents surveyed said that they feel encouraged to attend school activities. A big part of that is our strong relationship with our school community through our PTO. And our PTO has just been wonderful over the years. And for a school the size of Leonard, last year, our PTO spent over $60,000 that they had raised on our students. Some of the things that they purchased was a phone book card for our fifth grade classrooms. They pay for all of our assemblies. They pay usually for our field trips, for transportation and the cost for our field trips. They buy planners for every student. So when students are in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, they bring home planners at their parents' sign and have what their homework is and stuff. And our PTO paid 100% for those teacher supplies. So, you know, I was always the budget. You know, they keep wondering, how much am I getting this year? And I was like, okay, well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get $115 a teacher. That was like my gift, and now from our PTO, our teachers receive over $400 on top of what I'm giving. And so my little gift doesn't seem quite so. But they, they keep pumping in every year because they do some wonderful things, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that. But our playground equipment, a lot of our equipment that's on our playground is actually purchased and installed, has it installed by our PTO. This year, we always seem to have a theme. This year, our theme is screws up school. And we are going to look at places that need paint or repair or plants and do some newer furniture and some outside landscaping and things like that. The PTO really wants to get involved with that, and we have some ideas on some things we want to do for our schools. So they're pretty excited about that. One of the things that went really well for us, for our PTO, was, I just want to touch out real briefly, someone approached me, and I think it was like January last year, about, I thought it was a grant, and he said, you know, you're a non-topick, you can apply to this grant, anybody who applies gets some money from it. No, really telling me how much money I was gonna get from it. So I got involved in this grant, and then I realized it was more than a grant, it was like a fundraiser, golf outing, working with an organization, and it got really big, so I kind of turned it over to my PTO to help with it. And we ended up selling some raffle tickets for Tiger Suites and Red Wing Suites and stuff like that. And we probably sold about $4,000 worth throughout the school, throughout the spring, on trying to help this foundation raise money for their golf outing. We then had volunteers, including myself, who went to the golf outing at Wing Gate Private Course in Rochester, and it was the hottest day of the summer, and we helped them run their outing. Leonard Elementary sponsored a hole where I think he just went a car, he got hole one on it, and for the insurance reasons, they had to have somebody at tee off box, make sure it wasn't the same person teeing off every time, and they're in the right spot. And then somebody on the green, making sure that the ball actually went in the hole. So we just kind of sat there all day and ran that hole. And then helped them clean up and take down the banners and do all that stuff afterwards. It was actually a fun day of being on a really nice golf course and meeting some really neat people as they came through. We went back at the end of August to Wing Gate for a dinner, where they invited us back for the awards. And as I was sitting there, I got called up, and we presented, possibly a check, for $14,000 for our participation in this one golf outing event. And we're very thankful to DGE for inviting us to be part of this, and we hope to get invited back. I also know that they, they want to grow their influence with Oxford Schools, and like to get other organizations or other schools involved in this as well. And so it was, it was great. It was a fun day, it was easy, and the support that the school received from this organization was fantastic. So I want to publicly thank them for that. And that concludes our points of pride for that. Thank you, sir. Any comment? Yes, please.
About your PTO, like, do a lot of people come to your meetings?
It varies. Beginning of the year, there's usually a lot. We, last year tried an experiment, worked out really well, we're doing it this year, as we do one meeting at night, and then one meeting in the morning.
The best one, yeah.
During the school day. So that allows most people who may not have that flexibility and schedule that they work at night, or they drop it in the morning and want to come to the PTO meeting in the morning, they stay for, you know, at nine o'clock after they drop their kids off.
You just have a really good PTO team.
No kidding, yeah.
Yeah, they're good.
It's awesome.
That's cool. Anything else?
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you. Board members, we're at item five, Board of Education Matters, and I present to you, there's a recommendation for the MASV 2019 Delegate Assembly. And we have Chad and Mary. Dan?
Move to approve, we're here to answer, and Chad Griffith, we represent, to represent Oxford Community Schools Board of Education at the MASV's 2019 Delegate Assembly on Friday, November 8, 2018.
2019, thank you. Is there support? Heather, support? Discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Weaver.
Hello. We are waiting for the computer to warm up a little bit.
All right. Well, I'm not going to finance an operation, because you guys always compete for length.
We don't have a huge figure tonight, so. Please, for what it says, did you have the presentation in front of you? You want me to continue?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right. So the last grade, we obviously took the, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Last grade, we obviously, we took the MSTEP, grade three through seven, in ELA and math, fifth grade, in the eighth grade, they took science and social studies, as well as we took the PSAT in ninth grade and tenth grade, which covers ELA and math as well. And then in eleventh grade, we took, the students took the SAT, which obviously covers ELA and math, and then they also took science and social studies. You will notice a couple of things. First of all, there's no science scores. Again, they actually took the full science tests this year, or what would be considered the full science test, but we are still transitioning to the new standards, so those, we will not start getting scores until we start testing in the spring of 2020. It'll be the first year in which we get scores back from science, so that'll be, you'll start seeing scores again for science as well. I would imagine that then we will probably, I don't think transition is going to be as radical, so it'll be interesting to see what they do with social studies. The science test was really revamped with the new science standards, and the way they asked questions, and it wasn't so much memorization of facts and so forth, it was, the new test is more skill-based. So there was a complete revamp, whereas the social studies test, it is not a computer guided test, it's not a skills test, it really is more of a traditional type test. It'll be interesting to see if that starts to change as well, too. I've not heard any type of plan for that as of right now. I am gonna invite Mrs. Concha up here, she can help us go through this. Scores.
I'll just speak a little bit maybe while, he's bringing that up, to the elementary scores. You can see based on your packet that in ELA and math, in third and fourth grade, that we are above both the county and the state scores. You'll see a dip in ELA, math, and social studies in the fifth grade. We are above the state, but below the county and the state area guys. That actually is across the county, that fifth grade saw a dip. I was actually at Open Schools last week for state and federal program leaders, and this was a point of conversation for us. Not really sure there was an adjustment in the assessment, so we don't really know what happened, but for us, it's definitely an area of, I guess, not overly concerned, but concern in making sure that we are reviewing what we can, excuse me, implementing some improvements. So I'll speak a little bit to that. For ELA, I feel very confident in what we have in place, and Paul spoke a little bit about even their plan to continue strengthening workshop instruction. Our third and fourth, fourth grade scores really have shown an increase, which is showing the improvements coming up from K2, and that's really starting to carry through. And implementing the FOTX program is a direct result of looking at our scores and looking at the reading plans that we had implemented, and seeing that there's a strong concentration for them in those areas, and it's an area of need, not just for Oxford, but really across the county and the state. And FOTX instruction is kind of a hot topic right now, kind of nationally. As far as math shows, we are, this is an area that we don't have as fully developed as reading, and the read by grade three law, which I'll be sharing a little bit more about at our October 8 meeting, really kind of drove that a little bit for us, and really across the screen, and helped us really put strong, solid systems in place, strong interventions in place. And so we're trying to make a shift a little bit now here at Oxford, to look at math the same way, having a system approach to training students, trying to get a diagnostic in place, and then also providing some interventions. At our last meeting with the principals, I've asked and identified some parents that could potentially move into the math support role, and so we can start providing some professional learning for them, too, because they know this is an area that we need to address, as we have for reading.
So any questions on the other sheet? I would point out, the third grade ELA, that is the first time since 2009, 10, that we have been above the county average in third grade. So a lot of hard work by a lot of the principals, the reading specialists, teachers, they've done a phenomenal job, and Mrs. Concha coming on board, Mrs. Heidi Collins.
We've got there.
Did correctly once, and now I'm always, now I'm always Miss Concha now, so now she's gonna have to yell at me again, give me back straight.
I'm not used to yelling.
But a lot of hard work by the group down there, and, you know, it's one of those things you're watching, you can see when their fastest, also we were seeing things percolating up, but it just took a while to bubble up into the MSTEP, and, because that's a much broader test. And so it was nice to see that, and to see that improvement, so it was quite involved in third and fourth grade. And we are hopefully doing more in math.
Add one thing, too. I think something that, scores are really important, but I think there are value-added measures that are not measured by these scores, and I will say that I'm super proud, and I think the principals can say the same thing, that our teachers have really become diagnostic in their instruction. They're really good at identifying where there might be an area that we have to address, digging deeper, using alternative assessments to get at what that is, and implementing an intervention. And to me, like, we're seeing it obviously in the scores, but it's also hard to measure just how much they have grown in their, in their practice. It's hard work, and they're really doing a great job with it.
So any questions on the other?
There is no, what's that, there isn't anything in here that compares grade three going to fourth, fourth to fifth. So I think it's important that we kind of look at it that way, because the numbers are always different. You have different amounts of pupils in third grade in 2018 as opposed to 2019, they could be, they could vary up and down. That'll skew the percentage. So what I just did a little, little bit of comparison, if you take the ELA third grade class, and you project them up to ELA fourth grade, it's 10-point increase. If you take math from third grade and you go to math in fourth grade, it's a, it's a, about three per, three point, they're down three points. So I think that's really the way that we need to look at it, because, you know, we compare ourselves to the state, and you compare yourself to the county, well, the state of Michigan is one of, is, of course, the bottom of the national average, but yet Oakland County is at the higher point of the state of Michigan, so.
So that's why they're bolt-on there.
Right. So I guess my question, and what we need to look at is, where do we fit in Oxford? Are we growing? Or are we falling year after year, year over year? What does that number look like? And that's really, I think, what, yeah, we focus on all these things, because that's what gets publicized, and that's what everybody measures. Well, this school's good, I want them there because of this score, that score. But we have to look at who we are, what we are, and our demographics, what are they? What's the concept? Oxford. Oxford is the concept. So now are those kids making progress from the third grade to the fourth grade, to fourth to fifth? That's really, I think, what we need to do.
That's what we're really excited about, the third grade scores, because we can hold that and be moving off. Over time, being in the, in Oxford, our scores have generally started to catch up to the other districts that are ahead of us. And so, but we have been starting out in third grade somewhat behind everybody else. So now it's, it's really kind of like, hopefully we can hold this, and we can continue on, and as we focus a little bit more on math, you know, we work hard not to lose that, what we've gained so far. And yet, each group is a little bit different, so it's always, I learned that lesson when I was over at middle school principal, not get too excited over scores and stuff like that, at the same time, you guys keep them in perspective, this is one measure. And this is just one slice of the picture of Oxford Schools and of the kids. But also, what I always like to say, that to the principal, to the principals, and behind everybody, behind every number, there's a kid that is represented by that number, so these are still important. I don't want to dissuade either, but we are very encouraged by the scores, and yeah, you need to look at it many different ways. You can look at it this way, you can look at it by the building, by the grade level. I have those reports, I didn't want to give you too much information either, so I will let you ask Mr. Throne as to what you want to see, and I'll see if I can get you that information, but for the sake of the board presentation, and I wanted to keep it somewhat succinct. But yeah, so if you want to see different forms of the data, I have quite a bit, I got more this week from Open Schools as well, so.
And I just wanted to state also, one of the, I remember this, this report last year, and one of the ones that bugged me was math eight, which was a 39. And I look at that same class 2019, which would be math nine, right? It's 46, right? So a significant improvement in a class that we said, when we compared to 2018, to that same class 2017. So it's good, we're seeing movement in good, good ways. I like.
It's very, I, I'm not, you know, pointing anything out or trying to make, you gotta just be careful, that's all I say. I'll be honest with you, there's two different tests. Math eight, by the way, went to the PSAT, and now the nine, 10 is the PSAT, nine, 10, so it's a little bit different, so I don't want to say anything, we'll get to saying, but I will say this, as far as the secondary scores go, math is definitely the focus area. We've got to figure out, this has been a trend for a while. Hopefully, you know, in the last year, we put in a math coach to kind of help with some of this stuff as well. Mr. Robbly is just running around like man, trying to work with the math teachers, and trying to figure out what's going on. We've looked at all their assessments, and we're starting to figure out a course of action, but math is really at the secondary level, and it's got to be an area of focus for us, because we have been consistently below where the county is. And I compare this to the county, if you want to know really where we're sitting, if you go across, the county average is really a good parameter to use. If you look at the county average for demographics, the number one correlation to these scores is demographics, is the socio-demographics of the child, meaning, creed, reduce, household they come from, two parents, that type of stuff. That is, it is almost running a one-to-one correlation. So, that said, Open Schools demographics to the county average, it's very close to our demographics as a district. So that's where you kind of want to look at it and see the comparison, and I like to think that we should be a little bit above the county average at least, and more so, and then trying to push that up as we go along. And striving towards, you know, there's other districts in the county that are outperforming, so we're trying to learn from them, from their demographics, so we're trying to learn as well from them, and some of the things that they're doing, and where they're going with certain things. But in the end, we always have to remember that these, first of all, the MSTEP is not the greatest test in the world, and while we have scores that are not as proficient as other states, you also have to be very careful with comparing state to state, because some states have tests that are very, not very challenging. I don't want to disparage two states, just in case they're on a pick to watch the video or. I remember, back from it, but there are different tests, there's 50 different tests, and they all are at the same level of quality, rigor, so you have to be careful in that regard as well, too. So it's, it's very subjective, and it depends on who's paying the figure with the data, so we just have to be careful on some of that stuff. And like I said, the real measure is, what are our parents happy, our graduates happy, our students happy, is our staff happy as well, too? That is an important measure, and all of this goes add up to a clear picture of where Oxford Schools is. But we take this, which is very important, and so as the principals and all we, the governor and all beyond, we really strive to try to see that improve as well.
Thank you. Eric, did you have a question?
Yes.
A microphone, please.
Sorry, usually loud enough, people looking here. So, for me, I really don't care too much about how we are against the county and state. I mean, you know, stuff that data does this, but when I'm looking at this, there's two data points, there's 18 and 19. Two data points tells me nothing. I don't know how we're trending. So what might be interesting to see is 16, 17, 18, and 19, right? So now you see if your numbers are trending up, or your numbers are trending down, and that's gonna tell you if we have a problem. This doesn't tell me if we have a problem, this just tells me how we did it last year, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's where, yes, if we, or we come into school, too, and I can give you that data, it's a fantastic control, but we spend hours in that data, I spent two hours today, three hours today, I can tell you where we're trending, in what ways it's going to, and in ELA, I can tell you this is a big jump for us, we were kind of holding steady in the elementary, we've been a large jump this year. And then in the math, we've been this way consistently for a while now, we're trying to adjust where we're at.
Okay.
Just, well.
The other thing I was gonna say, I mean, what makes this compare for us in parent scores is, the test has been different every year.
It's crazy.
So even this year, we got a test release before the scores came out, and there was an outline since the first time MSTEP was implemented, what the revision has been each year. And so, it's really hard for us to, like, you can be really childish, and I don't want to put these down, but I also want to reveal in the sense that it's harder to say how we're feeling when there could be ten less items. They've taken out a complete section, they changed the writing, um, piece, and so, um, I just also want to be mindful of that, that, um, it isn't always comparing apples from apple from year to year, too.
Yeah, but, but the test is the same every year for everybody, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
The numbers will be comparable.
So, Eric, that's why you can compare in the year, but trending from year to year makes it difficult because the same kids in third grade didn't take the same test the last three, third grades. That, see, so what you're wanting to trend by year, it's impossible. The best we can do is that compare ourselves to Oakland schools, our county, because they all took the same test this particular year, because it's not going to be the same next year. And that's what's frustrating to a staff who's trying to, to, to work with their kids.
Try to, try to really compare ourselves against schools like that, probably, if that kind of helps with moving a little bit or not. And you know what? Don't have years where all of a sudden you pop up a little bit, and then the next year you get it, and you're like, you're crestfallen because it went down a little bit. So, there's also plus or minus of quite a bit given this test. I would say a plus or minus on the scores. I mean, I mean, it's been as high as ten or eleven, forty, or something like that on the, on the thing on the provision, it's plus like usually three. I think it is one to three as far as where that, how accurate it is, uh, the test scores are. The other thing I would also add is that the M-Step does not have enough items on it overall, the actual test. Like, the item analysis is so weak that we get back from the M-Step that at Oakland schools, they tell us it's basically educational practice, you fit for anything other than really high-level, big decisions because that standard on the test would be measured by no items, but imperium, interesting that, hey, if the person missed this question, they would have probably missed this one. So, you've got to be very careful with this test because there was so much pressure by the state legislature to reduce the testing time now. And if you remember, when this first came out, it was, oh my gosh, it was hours and hours of testing. They pushed on it so hard to reduce it down. Now they've got a test that is very unreliable and a lot of variance. So, that's why I just caution you, it's good data to see, it's important to not give it to anyone you'd like to see, um, but it's also, like, just caution that we don't go too far with it, too. Many measures, thank you, John.
Eric. Dan? I think if, if I understand what Eric was asking for, it was just a couple more years, you know, whether it's county or...
Just us.
Just us, and yeah, yes, those, those grades go up from third to fourth, to fourth to sixth, but at least we can have an idea if we get the longer period of time, more data points than Eric was asking for. But you're, you're right, at the end of the day, these are kids. They're kids taking a test, and we have to focus in the best we can and utilize that data as educational professionals to make the best decisions for, for our kids that are in our district. I think a lot of that information is coming from staff. The staff is really going to be the one that pushes that and say, you know, I think my kids are struggling here, or it might not be reflected on what the score says. We may do really well, but we may see internally that we're not doing as well as we need for the summer.
And I will also say that since the task worked in this area for a large amount of years, a number of years, is that sources all pop off like overnight. We started working on K3D, not even, not the first year I was here because we were still making stations and stuff, but really started really concentrating on it fifteen, sixteen. It has taken a long time to see that start to trend up, and so it takes quite a bit. It's not like, you know, where you push a button and you can get output D right away. It is something where you are molding and shaping and, and human being and trying to help improve the overall system in which you don't have direct control over the product coming in. And so, it is not an exact science, and that's why we're always learning, we're always trying, and that's what I would say with the principals, with, with, with the technology itself, the teachers especially, the reading specialists and parents, we are just trying to do our best and trying different things all the time to see what works. And what we've done over the last few years is to have more of a measured approach, especially with Mrs. Russell, the lieutenant psychologist who has helped us out a ton with NTSF, just a short time ago, been here, of looking at programs and seeing, does this work or not? We really try to concentrate on that and trying to see where we're pushing here, what output can we get? Because before then, we weren't always working with that data, and we're now getting that back, and we're getting that help, and we're trying to see that.
Anything else for anyone? Thank you, sir. And Mayor, yes, sir. Yes, please.
So, I'll, I'll be the first one to say that tests are not everything, but it is still important. And, um, Dan, you're probably the only one on the board. That first year, uh, that first full year when I was superintendent, I think our investment was a million dollars to put those libraries in all of our elementary classrooms. We made major investments in ELA that we simply did not have. You could go into two separate kindergarten classrooms, and there was different books, different curriculum, and I mean, Ken put a ton of his time, by far the majority of his time, in those elementary classrooms, just putting systems in place, getting consistent resources in place so that from a, a district-wide, a system-wide perspective, we could start moving forward. And because of that, I mean, when I saw these, I was personally, like, ecstatic. You look at the two yellow areas, we're even above the county average, it's just not by a ton, and so they're yellow. Uh, I don't know, I'd have to probably go back and prove it, but, like, I think these have the best scores I've seen in fifteen, twenty years. Now, does that mean our work is done? Absolutely not. Uh, you know, as what Ken and Anita alluded to, you know, we need to double down, we've got to start really figuring some things out from a math perspective, but it does give me really good encouragement of the work that our teachers and principals are doing. To me, it shows that it's paid off, and it'll continue to pay off. We just, we got to keep that. So, uh, personally, I'm very thankful for what's went into that, so...
Thank you for that. All right, we will move on to finance and operation. The first thing is we have a motion for a truck and accessories that was discussed in our last meeting. Would someone like to read that motion? Corey?
Move to approve the purchase of the twenty nineteen GMC Sierra pickup truck with accessories that totaled across a forty-four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars in the interest. We had one to deal with GMC Westland for maintenance and operating.
All right, and is there a second? Heather, second?
Discussion.
Dan? For those that may not have heard this before, this is for us taking this expense and trading it off with doing our own snow removal at some of the schools, better by reducing our cost on snow removal, is that correct?
Insult.
Insult.
Yep.
Okay. Make that clarification. Anything else? All those, all those who've favored, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Finance workshop.
Good evening. As we discussed approximately a month ago, uh, there were some questions in regards to the district debt. Um, I don't have a presentation for you, but what I do have this evening is a few handouts. In addition to the handouts, I have a larger, um, annual report for the School Bond Loan Revolving Fund, which is from two thousand and eighteen. And I'm not going to go over that in detail, but I am going to go over a portion of that, a very small portion of that, uh, as an overview. So, the, uh, the first item that I'm going to go over, uh, not with your handouts, actually is the Oxford Community Schools note for the financial statements, uh, four dash eleven is the page number. And it starts out talking about the general obligation bond payable, a two-sided, half piece paper, and four dash eleven. I believe they gave you also both labeled four dash eleven. We're looking at the side that is not certainly long-term debt, just to be clear. It's the other side. I wanted to show you, uh, the level of debt as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, that the district has in its possession. I wanted to show you the debt, which is a bonded debt of what's referred to as general obligation debt. And you see that there's several different issuers, that total ninety-nine million, two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Now, that, uh, that is the principal amounts, um, that is not the interest. And if you look over to the right, you'll see the principal amount once again for by year, and then you'll see the interest of by year for all of that bonded debt. So, I'm showing this to you just to give you an idea of the different kinds of debt that we have. So, as a reiteration, the district has bonded debt, which is what you're looking at, several different series. But then we also do something called the School Bond Loan Revolving Fund, and we borrow from that. And that is briefly discussed on that same page that you're looking at. And I will refer, but I really wanted to mention that to you is, I want you to try to think about this in your mind as, as we discussed briefly about a month ago, that our debt doesn't need, consists of bonded debt as well as School Bond Loan Revolving Fund debt. And you're, if you read that big, big, two-page pamphlet that I put into the board pack, or I put it into the board pack, uh, if you had a chance to pause it, you'll see that there's approximately a hundred and, I believe it's thirty-two districts that borrowed from the Michigan School Bond Loan Revolving Fund. They do that for one primary reason. They're not levying enough debt mills to their taxpayers in order to service their bonded debt, okay? And that's as simple as I can make it. They're not levying enough debt mills because they want their residents to pay a very consistent level of debt over the course of a year. Right now, and in the last several years, our Oxford taxpayers get seven point nine debt mills. And so, that in totality, um, really is shy of our total expenditures for our debt. So, we borrow from the School Bond Loan Fund in order to make those debt payments. That seem reasonable and clear to everyone? I'm going to move and actually go to, um, the page that shows, uh, on four eleven, the long-term debt. And the long-term debt, you'll see that this is again, as of June thirtieth of this year. You'll see that there's a beginning balance which shows all of our bonds, but then it also shows in the middle our School Bond Loan Revolving Fund debt. And then it shows additions. The additions are additional borrowings or issuances of debt. And as a reminder, last year, we sold bonds, right, to do our construction that we just had in summer. So, those additions, really what you see there are what, what we really sold on bonds. But we also have some reductions. Those are the payments that we made, both the, um, the old bond debt that we paid as well as the interest on that, on the bonds. So, to make a long story short, you'll see an ending balance for that long-term debt of a hundred and thirty-five billion, and that includes our School Bond Loan Fund debt, okay? So, it's not just our bonds, but it's a combination of the two, to be very clear. Dan, you have a question?
Please. So, if I'm looking at this appendixy, I'm reminded of jumping ahead, and I should wait.
Can you wait, please, after this? Sure. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Does anyone have any questions on the sample that I was just referring to the last one? I'm understanding that, I'm going to... I'm going to quickly move to, um, the debt retirement fund. You'll see a single page that I handed out, and again, we, we, um, have the board approve this annually. We show the revenue that we take, and as I discussed previously, the revenue for our debt, which is seventeen point three million dollars. And again, part of that revenue comes from the School Bond Loan Fund, which we borrowed from. The majority of the other component of that revenue comes from the tax collection, which is a seven point nine debt, as I mentioned. If you look down, you'll see total appropriated for expenditures of sixteen point seven nine. So, as you can see, we're borrowing just enough that we still have a balance so that we can make those debt payments. So, I just wanted to show this to you, uh, just to let you know that again, try to reaffirm that we have to borrow in order to make those debt payments because we do not levy enough debt mills. We want the taxpayers to have a consistent seven point nine debt. Now, if we go to appendixy, Dan, and, uh, I wanted to briefly mention specifically, you turn the page to page seventeen, it talks a little bit about all the districts, and again, I think I mentioned a hundred and thirty-seven districts, a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-three districts as of two thousand and eighteen have a balance with the School Bond Loan Revolving Fund. In two thousand and eighteen, our balance for Oxford schools, which is on the top of that page seventeen, is for twenty-nine million, five hundred and forty-eight dollars. And that's the figure that I'm sure we're just going to show on here, because this is an annual report for two thousand and eighteen. We're at approximately thirty-seven dollars. And as you all may recall from a couple weeks ago, the board allowed us to refinance that debt at much lower interest rate. So, our balance for the School Bond Loan Revolving Fund is going to go drastically down to almost nothing, but we're going to have not more bond debt because we refinanced to save our district taxpayers interest, okay? So, does anyone have any questions on that? I know that can be a little convoluted, and I know, Dan, you had mentioned that question on this segment.
Sure. So, I think maybe you just answered it, but I'm going to ask my question anyways. So, our number will come down significantly because we're refinancing our, our bond debt, correct? So, is that what these districts that are sitting at point seventeen with zero being drawn from the revolving fund?
Some have a mandatory, all districts have a different, um, mandatory repayment of their School Bond Loan Fund. Ours is about several years, so you'll see on the chart right, it'll say either borrowing or paying.
Correct.
So, we're still borrowing for at least another, another few years because we're borrowing so that we can pay off that old bond debt that we have. Once we pay off a lot of that bond debt, we can then start going to repayment mode for the School Bond Loan Revolving Fund, okay?
Right. I'm just going to use this as an example. Here on Valley, uh, page sixteen, middle of the ages, years in fund, five years, they weren't only in fund for five years. They started at point sixteen with one point one million, and seventeen, zero, two thousand and eighteen, zero. How do they go from only being and paying for five years? Does that mean they just don't have a lot of bond debt that, and they could have basically had their board approve a higher debt millage so that they don't need them all from the School Bond Loan Fund in order to pay off the bond debt? So, instead of us, and I'm trying to work through this because I want to make sure that I'm correct, we could go to zero and have, borrow no money from the state and go from seven point nine mills to fifteen?
If the board so decides. The board decided a long time ago, Oxford Community Schools Board said they wanted to do that, that they wanted to keep it safe. But theoretically, the answer is yes. We are statutorily obligated by the state of Michigan to service our debt however it needs.
So, when the argument comes up, Oxford Community Schools has more debt than a lot of districts?
Sure.
Is that because we chose to stay at seven point nine debt mills as opposed to what some other districts would do?
No, because we made that in another form, such as bonded debt. Instead, we're choosing to use a hybrid and spread out the length of our debt so that our district taxpayers don't have that heavy burden year after year, but instead, they have a longer duration to pay.
That's what I'm at, that's what I'm getting at. We can eliminate it if we just said, you know what, we want to raise our debt mills to fifteen.
That is correct.
Okay.
And we have the ability to do so.
Okay.
These are called...
I'm not advocating for it.
No, I, I...
But I'm just saying.
But that question is a fair question in short interest.
Okay. And so, the other board members, in the past, this has been really important because numbers get thrown out without meaning, and all of a sudden, a really big number gets thrown out, and everyone goes, ah! Right? There's a reason why the number's there, and you can't compare that to somebody else because it's not apples to apples. So, so, Dan, thanks for clarifying that. So, Dan, thanks for clarifying that.
I also want to make a point, because I don't think it's in any of these documents. And I'm not sure when the state changed it, but today, if a district pays off all of their debt in the school bond revolving loan fund, a district does not have the option to get back in. And so you're going to see, when you get your financial statements and our audits and all that kind of stuff, you're going to see the payout schedule. And in, I don't know what it is, I'm just going to guess, 15, 20 years, you're going to see that ours' schedule could be down to zero. Okay, I'm going to be retired way before then. But my recommendation to the board at that time is, even if you keep $1,000 in there as debt, don't pay it off, because once you're out, you can never get back in. And so you just, you need to, you need to understand that, that there's reasons why districts will not only refinance to pay down their bonded debt, they're going to borrow money so that they can keep in that, that fund. All right? So I just, I want to make that.
Does anyone ever have any questions on this?
So this, I just want to be sure that I understand, so that all the stuff that we're talking about is the, the school bonds, the revolving...
School bond loan revolving fund.
Yeah, so we have that and the bond, and that is to help finance the bond. So I understand that the bonds are issued, we can only, excuse me, I'm sorry, my brain's on me slightly today. It's the voters approve for us to pass that bond in the first place. So any of this, so this debt doesn't just come out of nowhere, the voters have already approved its debt, and then we do our best to finance it in the most affordable way. Okay? So it's nothing new, it's not like the school district, just because we hear things out about it in the community, and it's not like the district just jumped up and decided to spend a bunch of money, because there's always questions about, well, why are you in debt? Why aren't we always at zero? We should be at zero, we should have a balanced budget. But all these things were voted on by the community, because we wanted to put air conditioning in schools, because we want to make improvements to our building, and the state, besides the fact that we don't always know what we're going to get, that's not enough money to do that. Am I correct?
We also told our voters, and this is very important, Mary, that if they passed the bond portion, we would not raise their taxes. How can you raise $30 million a bond and not raise your taxes? Because I'm obligated to pay them back, because I'm borrowing that money through the loan bond revolving fund to pay that. Eventually, yes, it will be paid, but that's how we keep our local tax consistent.
Some districts choose not to borrow, and they choose to levy a higher debt mill in order to service their debt, bottom line. The board of this district chose long ago, probably many of us are even around here, to not do that, but instead keep the 7.9 debt mills year over year safe. And if you look on one of these pages, it should say how many years we've been in the fund, the school bond loan revolving...
25 or something, 25.
So did you get an education about how long it would be a 23, and the reason why?
Right.
Anyone else have any questions? Dan?
One last question for me. We're at 7.9 debt mills.
Correct.
Is that the state, is that what the state sets, or is that just...
No, that's what we set, that was the debt mill, it was prior to the board vote way back when. And so the board at that time said we will not levy over 7.9 debt mill, but instead, we'll use the school bond loan revolving fund to service all of our debt.
So...
To help service our debt.
I guess it was my last question. The state doesn't dictate what you must set your debt, so we could, you know, raise it lower and service all of your debt.
Right.
You could lower it if you wanted, you would just be borrowing more from the state.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for bringing that clarification. Anything else, Sam?
Human Resources. Yes. So hopefully you had a chance to look in your packet this year with all of you, an overall staffing update indicates all the staffing changes that essentially took effect at the end of last year, resignations, retirements, and then also our new hires essentially from July 1st, and those folks who are starting to begin this year. And the board is privy to all of our certified hires that you will approve with your consent agenda. Sometimes you're not aware of all the other things that are happening in the district in terms of other positions, that are not certified positions, our parrot's secretaries, some are apple positions, as well as the retirements and resignations. So hopefully this was a concise overview for you about some of the changes, the who's, and whether they're new positions or backfilled positions. You'll notice a difference of, we had 31 separations, we had 48 new hires. Not all of those were full-time positions, there was significant investment in our special education department, three special education teachers, as well as psychologists. We had, I think, three full-time hires in our virtual program, which as you know, has been expanding. And then we had a large number of, you'll see, shared time mentors, which are hourly employees working in our shared time program. So then, you know, one of the things I just want to point out, maybe this is a question that members of the board would have, is that when you look at resignations, which is something that we're always kind of monitoring to determine whether there are any underlying factors why people are leaving the district, and really want to make sure that we've got a pulse on where our people are going, the reasons that they're leaving us, to see if there are things that are within our control that are really factors that we've got to look at and consider. And there's really been a variety of factors that people have left, from geographic factors, of people leaving to work closer to home, we've met a number of people that have left the profession and thinking on other careers, and we've had a couple of people that have left for promotions financially. And so it's really kind of run the gamut, nothing that really stood out to us in terms of any predominant reasons. The one thing that I would tell the board is that times are different now, public education, there's a significant shortage of teachers, you know, regardless of what it's like here, out there, the shortage is real. I think sometimes the state will tell you that there is a large number of certified teachers out there that are available and ready to teach, and they're not. There may be enough certified teachers in the state, but many of them have left the profession, they're not interested in teaching at all, and so it kind of skews things. We're seeing significant shortages in special education, a lot of secondary positions, specifically career technical education, science and math, and this shortage happens everywhere. 75% of our teachers who we hired were employed in teaching positions in other districts. So that'll give you some lens of the new folks that we're hiring. So the, what that's leading to is a lot of districts are providing experience, where 10 years ago, if you were a teacher, you were kind of locked in, I mean, right or wrong, a lot of districts wouldn't provide steps to teachers who were leaving, you started over if you went to new districts, and that's because you had 100 applicants for every position, and there was no reason that you had any quality people for positions to pay experience. Those times have come and gone, and so now a lot of districts are providing experience, and some teachers are conscious of the fact that there is transferability that exists in public education that didn't exist eight, 10 years ago, not even that long ago. And so you're seeing people that are, that are leaving, and they're able to go get a job closer to home, if they're in some of these key positions, because those districts will give them every year of experience that they have in the system, when that didn't happen before. So we're seeing a lot more of that happen in the profession nowadays than we were before, and so just a little insight for the board on that. So any questions on the, on the update?
I have just one comment, as I looked at it, it was, two things hit my mind, is that it's a remarkable amount of movement in a short period of time that you have to adapt to. And then secondly, the kind of numbers of people that you have to bring back into a culture, right, and make them team-o, right, and, you know, thinking of the portrait of graduate, and getting someone to a death wall, I mean, phew, it's work, isn't it? It's work, so I'm proud of you guys, it's just a tremendous job.
Thank you, thank you. So one other quick update for the board, another recent question about evaluation process, and so I wanted to give a brief update on evaluation, what we've done with some of our apple employees, the classified employee groups that didn't exist in the past. I need to have Mr. Praddy privy to the teacher evaluation process, which is, which is very public, but since I came on into the district, came to discover that there was a significant segment of our district that was not engaged in any evaluation process at all. Our parrot educators and our, and our secretaries and our technology specialists, while they have evaluations dictated and outlined in their collective bargaining agreement, it was not being implemented, and so we worked with that association to develop a tool, we actually didn't develop a tool, we had a tool, but the district had adopted, it just hadn't been used. And so one of the changes that we went through is, we had adopted a new system, it's a Talented Performance, which is a Power School division now. We had a program called Sages, and Sages was bought out, and it wasn't a very good system, and so we decided that while we were transitioning to this new software system, we were going to implement a more robust evaluation process and capture a larger segment of our employees. And I know that sometimes people think about evaluation, and they think about, you know, kind of an end-of-year scorecard, and, you know, they, I think their mind always goes to maybe some punitive thing about the things that we're not doing right. And I think all of us, our candidate team, would attest that our perspective on evaluation is it's a professional growth tool, period. That is how we employ the system, it is intended to help people grow professionally, to reflect on their practice, and provide a metric of which to kind of measure themselves against. So one of the things that we did in this process is essentially implemented what is primarily, I think, a goal-based process, where we're asking all of our employees to develop two goals, a personal goal and a professional goal, and providing a mechanism and a tool that will provide opportunities for more ongoing conversation, collaborative conversation between their administrators and the employees in order to just help folks grow professionally. And that's what it's intended to do. And so the system that we're putting in place is really about creating a system where we kind of define the process, where administrators are going to engage in two-way dialogue with employees, and talk about what are you working on, you know, how can we support you, how can we help grow professionally, and have kind of a defined model for that. We also have the rubric that folks will be evaluated against, but it's really about creating those collaborative conversations to help people grow professionally. So, you know, hopefully that would give you a little bit of insight. With our OSPO bargaining group, our parrot's secretaries and technology specialists, we created a three-year cycle for those folks, where they're evaluated completely in one year, where they do their goals process, and then they're evaluated on the rubric. The other two years of that cycle, they're just engaged in a goal process, that they'll work with their administrator on. So, you know, the one thing that I would tell all of you, that I tell everybody that we train and work through is, this is, you know, I consider evaluation process to be, as I've been saying, our process is to make sure that we're servicing and serving our employees well, that we're providing them the tools that they need to be able to grow professionally, and if there are ways that we can engage in an evaluation process for me, then we want to be able to do that. You know, we want to be able to adapt and make sure that we're supporting our people in the best way we can. So just wanted to give you some insight into where we're at.
Thanks so much. And any kind of trust, yes, Heather?
What was the tool, the evaluation tool that we already had, what was that called? Was it part of Power School?
So the rubric itself or the software program?
Software.
The software program is called PERFORM.
Is it part of Power School, or is it...
So, so Power School, and I know Tim could probably speak to this more, have more experience with Power School, but they had bought up a lot of different companies, and worked to create kind of this, you know, kind of rule the public education world, from human resources to business, to student data and information systems. So Power School used to be known as a student information system, and then they purchased finance company, also purchased Talented, which covered kind of the human resource, and now they're in the, I think, in the process of really integrating those three systems to have a comprehensive suite. And so PERFORM is really, I mean, I probably shouldn't call it Talented, it's Power School Division, but that wasn't, that wasn't the Talented system.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did I capture that right, Tim?
Yeah, Power School PERFORM.
Yeah, okay.
Very good, thank you very much. Student Services?
None.
Well, thanks for being here. Unscheduled audience participation?
Uh, no.
Okay. Scheduled activities are before us, any clarifications?
None.
Anyone desiring a comment, as a final board comment?
I will real quick. Please. So Tim brought up earlier, way back when, when it started with the whole, not the start of it, maybe sort of year 2015, there were a lot more 30s and 40s on this than there were 50s and 60s. So we've come a long way as a district in our investment, our investment in teachers, in our investment in our students. We show the problem of where we, where we're bad, we should be proud of that, where we're going, we should be proud of.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say one thing to Mr. McDevitt, sometimes often intangible to the most important thing, but they're not easily measured. When you have a PTO that can raise $60,000, and you put some effort in at a golf outing and a fundraiser, make 14, that helps out the school district, that is trying to do the best it can for a community, right? And what I would just want to say is that although that's a bit intangible, it took time and effort and sacrifice to get it. And I think, I just want to say thank you, because you didn't have to do those things, and appreciate it, thank you very much.
Can I share something?
Yes.
I'd just like to share how much I appreciate the full circle that we do within the district as well as with our students, and the work that we're doing to make sure that our students are taken care of. But it sounds like we're doing the same thing for administration, for our teachers, giving them the ability to, giving them the information, so we can work together and develop things in real time, for things that need to be taken care of in real time. It doesn't take three years' worth of meetings and committees and conferences to get something done. And that we're supporting the teachers, and I think that's what shows also in the data that we're coming up with, is that full support, having those evaluation processes. The people behind the scenes are so important, because none of us could do any of this without the people that are behind the scenes, that don't, that don't always get the coffee mugs from 30 students, you know, at Christmas time. And it's important that they have opportunities also, because that evaluation process is really important. I don't, I can't get any better if somebody doesn't tell me, doesn't give me an honest evaluation. I really appreciate that, and I think it really does show throughout the district how, how people are supported all the way around. Dan, I think that's fantastic, I think it shows, it does show up in our numbers, so keep going.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there something else? Would someone like to make a motion to go into closed session? Jeff?
Move to be closed session, pursuant to the open meeting next, section 8H, to consider material exempt from disclosure under another statute.
Is there support? Support, Eric? Give him support, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, wait, we gotta, we gotta do that roll call, sorry.
Allison, Natalie?
Yes.
Dan, Ellen, for the group?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
You're cancer?
Yes.
You're flustered?
Yes.
You're dazed?
Yes.
Or shivered?
Yes.
All right, we move into closed session, thank you very much, everyone. It is 7:40. It is 8:27, and we move back into open session. And we are at number 15 on the agenda. Is there anything in other? All right, if nothing in other, then adjourn our meeting. Thank the board members for the work, good work, and thank you.